All right, welcome to the Planning Commission meeting on June 26, 2025. I have asked Commissioner Fugel to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Fugel. Do I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
I move we approve tonight's agenda with the continuation of item number one to the July 10th meeting.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Martinow and a second by Commissioner Fugel. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve tonight's staff reports?
I motion to approve tonight's staff reports.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Shirley and a second by Commissioner Fugel. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do I have any declarations of conflicts and abstentions from commission members? Seeing none, I will move to, we're continuing item number one. So I'll go down to item number two, which is a public hearing to consider the request of St. John's properties to amend City Code Section 10-14-24-1-C-2. Permitted principal uses in the Grove Commercial Sales Subdistrict by modifying the provisions and requirements for permitted principal uses within the Grove Commercial Sales Subdistrict to permit use number 6250 apparel repair alteration and cleaning pickup services, shoe repair services. Jacob.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Good evening, Madam Chairman and members of the commission. I'm Jacob Hawkins from the Planning Department. So the first item that we have for tonight is a Code Text Amendment for St. John's properties. And this is to add use 6250 to the list of permitted uses in the Grove Commercial Sales Zone. And this use is a more general category for apparel repair, alteration and cleaning pickup services and shoe repair services. Now, the applicant is requesting this use so they can add in a dry cleaning and laundromat business in one of their buildings located along North County Boulevard. So going over the list of zoning uses, which you guys can't really see just yet, but there's this thing on our website called the land use code numbers. And it can be found in the community development webpage of the cities. Not right now. If you want to just like bring it back up and put it back down, that'll probably be quick and easy. But in this list of uses that's on our website, we categorize as many different uses as we could possibly think of. And so it ranges from like service uses, like offices, to retail uses, like grocery stores and things like that. And split into different numbers so we can kind of better categorize them. And so this specific use that the applicant was applying for, use 6250, is one of those more general ones that includes a small list of additional uses in its overall umbrella. So while this one says it's for apparel repair, alteration, cleaning pickup services and shoe repair services, specific uses in this category include pressing alteration garment repair, laundry and dry cleaning pickup services, fur repair and storage, shoe repair, shoe shining and hat cleaning, locker rental and locker clubs. So if this specific use is approved, it will include all of these as permitted uses in the zone as well. Now, this overall use, use 6250, is permitted in other zones. So for example, if we look at the zoning map, the commercial sales zone, which is this portion right along here. We've got the CS2 zone. We have the downtown village commercial, which is this darker green down here. We have the Grove Mixed Housing, which is like these kind of pink colors. We have the Grove Business Park Overlay, which is this yellow hashed area, the manufacturing distribution zone and the neighborhood commercial zone, which is up here. All of these different zones permit for this use. Now, a lot of these zones are similar to the Grove Commercial Sales Subdistrict, which is what the applicant is applying for. So they're all largely commercial in nature. And this particular use is a low impact use with a focus on personal service elements. One of the key considerations from staff in our recommendation is that this use is a complementary use adjacent to residential uses, which is why, which is the reason why the use was specifically included in the Grove Mixed Housing Subdistrict rather than in the Commercial Sales Subdistrict or the Interchange Subdistrict. However, with the establishment of the Valley Grove Mixed Use Overlay and the construction up to 100 or 1,100 residential units nearby in these areas, the staff recommends approval of the proposed Code Text Amendment. And I mean, here in the Grove Zone in general, it's next to a whole bunch of other residential areas as well. And so I can take any questions or I'll pass it over to Daniel.
Can you bring up the list of uses? Okay, so that's, that's what we have. The applicant is proposing 6250. 6250 is a category of uses. Right here, this use 6252 is laundry and dry cleaning. Laundry and dry cleaning pickup services only. So it's not a laundromat where you can just put the washers and you put the coins and stuff like that. This is for laundry and dry cleaning pickup services only. I mean, I don't know when was the last time we ever saw a floor repair and a storage type of situation or locker rental, locker clubs. So I'm assuming this is more for like small storage of things. So we have multiple options when something like this is presented to us. We can say, hey, we would like to approve the entire use, 6250, everything included on it. We would like to reduce it to, for example, 6252. Or we can say 6250 with the exception of 6254 if we're against the shoe shining and hat cleaning or something like that, you know? In this case, for example, I, I don't, I don't know exactly what that type of use is. I'm not, I don't think someone will come up with an application for a locker club or a locker rental, but we never know. So again, when we send a recommendation, we can say, sure, we like the entire category. We'd like to be very specific. Or we can say this with the exception of that. So let's keep that in mind when you guys open it to the public and the public make comments or when you guys have the discussion between you. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Daniel. Does anybody have any questions for Jacob?
So they're, they're talking about the main use to be 6252. I assume 6251 would also be included in that. I mean, if they're doing dry cleaning, usually there's pressing alteration and garment repair associated. Not always, but I would make that assumption. So I don't mind limiting it to 6251 and 52 because that more aligns with what they're doing. But that's my thoughts. We can limit it to those two, can't we?
Well, that's, that's up to the, to the, for the
City Council.
Commissioners, no, for the Commissioners to discuss. The application from the, from, from the applicant is to add 6250, all of them, right there. Okay? That's what they're, that's what they would like to, that's their proposal is to add all of the uses right there. You guys feel comfortable, you guys can, you guys discuss it and make your recommendation based on that. But yeah. But I, I confirm with the applicant that their, the proposal is to add all of the uses, to go 6250 with all the uses included.
Any other questions for Jacob? Thank you, Jacob. This is a public hearing, so I will open it up to the public. Seeing none, I will close it to the public and I will bring it up to the Commissions, Commissioners for a discussion or emotion.
I don't know if you guys remember the old Family Smith Grocery Store that used to be on Main and First? And they had lockers in there and you could rent those lockers for cold storage, meats, different things like that. That's what that locker is. It's kind of an old use when people used to have butchered their own animals and had need to have a place to store it when they didn't have their own facilities. It is very limited and it's only those five uses, so.
I'm okay, I believe with all the uses, but if we want to just focus on what's going in right now, but I don't.
I don't think it's worth it. I mean, I think we just, they're all pretty, they're all pretty complimentary of one another. If we're thinking of the uses there, they don't, none of those uses would fill out of place if they went into that location either.
True.
So I don't think there's a need to limit it.
So, sorry, sorry, I'm interrupting Commissioners, but the applicant who couldn't make it has an emergency. In Texas, he's, he's texting me, so I'm trying to portray that information to you guys. He's watching you guys online. He says that he will feel comfortable to say 6250 with the exception of 6256, which he says that he has no idea what that is either, just that they.
We don't really know either, right? Like as far as we know, it could be like Amazon's coming in and doing lockers to drop stuff off out, right?
Well, when I looked it up, it could be, it's more for like gyms, gyms in amusement parks and things like that.
I, I did a quick Google and it's, it's, it's storage, it's any, storage of anything. But in a small, instead of renting a whole room, you rent a portion of a room.
It's small, interesting.
I would like to, I don't think we need to limit that so we don't get any
I was gonna say. I don't know, even if that was there, is that?
I, I think we just leave it how it is.
I think it's fine because it would probably be in one of those units. They'd run it out and put lockers in there, right?
Yeah.
It wouldn't be like a gym coming in or something major. Is that correct, Daniel? The understanding of lockers, locker rental and locker clubs? It, it would have to fit in one of those units that St. John's is building. So it wouldn't be, I'm, I'm even fine with 6256. So I'm fine limiting it, I'm fine with all of them.
Okay, I'll make a motion. I move the Planning Commission forward a recommendation of approval to the City Council for the proposed amendment to City Code Section 10-14-24-1-C-2, permitted principal uses in the Commercial Sales Subdistrict by adding the use 6250 apparel repair, alteration and cleaning pickup services, shoe repair services to the list of permitted uses in the Grove Commercial Sales Subdistrict and adopting the exhibits, conditions and findings of the staff report and is modified by the condition that all final planning, engineering and fire department requirements are met.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Fugel and a second by Commissioner Martinow. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving to item number three, which is a public hearing to consider the request of Paige Westover to amend City Code Section 10-13D-3-E, conditional uses in the rural commercial overlay zone by amending the qualifying provisions for use number 5811 restaurants. Jacob.
All righty, thank you, Madam Chairman. All right, so the next item that we have for tonight is another Code Text Amendment and this one is from Paige Westover. Ms. Westover owns the property at 504 West 1100 North. That's this one right here that you guys might recognize as Snuck Farms. So this property is in the R18 zone and it also has the rural agri, sorry, the residential agricultural overlay and it also has the rural commercial overlay as well. Now, in the rural commercial overlay, it allows for, you know, several types of uses. One of those uses, if we actually go over here, you can see as a conditional use, restaurants is one of those permitted uses, but it has certain provisions. And we'll kind of talk about that here in just a second, but I wanted to start off with a little bit of history for this property. So this property, if we zoom in just a little bit, you can see that there's a little farm stand right up here next to 1100 North. Now, this farm stand was built in 2018 and as, after it was built, it drew a lot of attention and a lot of people started parking on the streets up in front of it. And so in 2023, the applicant applied for a minor site plan amendment that way they could add a parking pad right over here. And this parking pad included about eight parking spaces. And then a little, just recently in May 2025, the applicant sent in a building permit application so that way they could add in addition on to their building. And as part of the plans, the applicant is requesting to use the farm stand for a bit of seating area where people can purchase a bit of food from the stand and then eat there, which is classified as a restaurant. And so that's why the applicant has applied for the Code Text Amendment for the rural commercial overlay today. Now, of course, her application does apply to all properties that are in the rural commercial overlay. So it's not specific to this site necessarily. But currently, the provisions in the rural commercial overlay, they only permit restaurants, as you'll notice here, they only permit restaurants to be located along 2600 North because that's where the Stonegate Wedding Venue is. And of the remaining provisions, that's actually the only one that isn't met at this time, which is why the applicant is applying for the Code Text Amendment to modify this specific provision to allow for restaurants to be located also along 1100 North within the rural commercial overlay. Now, the purpose of the rural commercial overlay zone is to promote the redevelopment, beautification and the community oriented commercial use of properties in rural areas of Pleasant Grove while maintaining the very low density residential character of the area. And to protect the general welfare of residential neighborhoods, it's intended that most commercial uses are located in commercial zones rather than residential zones, except for certain home occupations and limited uses in certain overlays such as the rural commercial overlay. Now, while the rural commercial overlay permits limited commercial uses in residential areas, extra consideration should be given to the proposed conditional use in proximity to nearby residential uses. And so notes with this commercial overlay, let me go back here to the zoning map. So being, you know, Snuck Farms down here and the Stonegate area up here, nodes with this commercial overlay, they have the capacity to offer small commercial services to the surrounding neighborhoods without being as intense as typical commercial zones. However, in the case of allowing restaurants within the rural commercial overlay, staff finds that restaurants should solely be located at most along collector roads with a minimum of two lanes, such as 2600 North or 1100 North. And that way we can avoid there being, you know, any restaurants or anything like that in areas where there's not quite as much traffic on like local roads. I brought this up. So this is the transportation master plan. This is usually done by the engineering department, but I wanted to bring this up because this actually kind of helps identify where there are collector roads here in Pleasant Grove City. So this light green is a collector road with two lanes and the dark green is collector with three lanes. And so 2600 North is three lanes wide. And then 1100 North along this area is also three lanes wide, according to all this stuff. And so that's part of staff's reasoning as to why we want to try to keep it on some of these more trafficked areas. But overall, staff recommends approval of the proposed Code Text Amendment with the condition that if restaurants are to be permitted in the rural commercial overlay, such restaurants should be limited in their location to only being located along 2600 North or 1100 North. With that, I can take any questions, but I do also want to bring it up for discussion if there are any additional conditions or any other discussion that the Planning Commission wants to talk about, such as, you know, if we want to include requirements for ingress or egress or signs or things like that. I will also note that the proposed Code Text Amendment does not remove restaurants from the list of conditional uses. And so the applicant will be back at a later time and we'll be able to talk about the conditions for this specific use for her property at that time. But yeah.
Commissioners, we're not talking about a specific site plan, site plan at this time. We're not talking about a specific property at this time. What we're talking is about a, to amend the conditions on the what a restaurant can operate in an RCO zone. Right now, we only have three conditions in there, as you guys can see, and we're modifying one of those conditions. The conditions that we have right now is that, that they have fronted to a 2600 North and that's the, that's what's amended by adding 1100 North. The two acres should be required for a restaurant site and that the square footage of the restaurant designated for food service should be determined and limited by the number of legal parking spaces provided on site. So those are the conditions that we have right now. This is what we're working on. Do we, do we, in more simple words, do we like to extend that from 2600 to 1100? And do we like the conditions we have or would like to add more conditions? If, if in the future, an applicant would like to go with that or apply for a conditional use permit, the site plan will be presented to you guys at the time of a conditional use permit because it's a conditional use permit on the zone. So it doesn't mean that, that someone just can go ahead and do it, they need to come to you guys. And if those conditions are met, then it will, it will be approved.
Thank you, Daniel. Any other questions for Jacob?
So with that, with it being a conditional use, if somebody were to come in and apply and apply for another conditional use, we aren't limited to just these conditions. We can add additional conditions at the time that the conditional use is being applied, right?
That's a fantastic, that's a fantastic question, Commissioner Fugel. We can only go with the conditions that are listed right there. We cannot impose new conditions unless there are conditions already established somewhere else in our code regarding commercial uses.
So we would need to add conditional uses to this as far as this overlay goes because we're, we're changing the overlay to include 1100 North. So if there's more conditions we want, it, it needs to be done tonight?
Yes.
Okay.
Are there any conditions as far as signage or anything like that? I mean, if someone applies this later and puts a big neon sign up in kind of a residential area, we don't want that to come across. So is there, there, there's no limitations as far as signage or lighting or anything at this point? Or are there any rules within the city that will govern that?
So we, we already, we already have rules for, for signage.
Yeah. Would they apply to this though?
They will apply to it, correct, because they already exist. They already exist. But for example, like coming up with a condition to just this site plan, to just a future site plan without being noted there, it's, it's a slippery slope.
Okay, that's why I'm asking, I just want to.
Yeah.
Because I can see down the road, somebody else coming and putting something small in and then an argument coming.
Yes, for sure.
Thank you, Jacob.
Thank you.
Is the applicant here? If so, would you like to come to the podium? Just state your name and.
Paige Westover.
Hi.
Hi.
Is there anything that you'd like to add to the conversation?
I think Jacob and Daniel have done an excellent job researching and describing the history of the property and the intent behind, you know, the need for, for this Code Text Amendment. I would just say as far as parking goes, we, just to bring to your attention that the nature of the farm and just the natural environment of it and also the limiting, we are limited in space as far as like what, and you will see that when I come back to apply for this, if, if it gets passed, that we are limited in size as far as where the farm shop stands and what we are trying to do is really things that we are already doing. It's, we're just expanding the shop a little bit and people are already hanging out, eating because of the environment that's been created there. We've created a lot of parking that wasn't required, given the size of the shop right now. But because we saw a need, we were able to take some of the pasture away and provide parking just because we, our intent is to be good neighbors and be an asset to the community and not a nuisance. So, you know, I'm just saying we have a good intent and this will just help us do what we're doing in a more legal way, I guess we'll say. Yeah, any questions for me?
I drive by there a lot, it's, it's gorgeous, I love it. I'm just curious, do you have signage right now where people pull in into the parking space?
We do, we have some, some like sandwich board signs that indicate that we're open.
Okay.
And then, and also like one that says where the entrance to the property is because we kind of have it, there's like a direction to it. So where you go in, and then we have signage that's wood and metal that matches the aesthetic of, of the farm, that tells you directions where to go. And then the parking lot is right there. And then there are sign, two signs that say exit that are temporary currently. They're just like vinyl signs that will make a wood sign in the future, yeah.
And then you said you're already doing it. Do you, so you don't necessarily expect, I mean, possibly one day more people would be coming, but you don't see this as being like, like I said, I, it's great. But do you see it as causing a lot of traffic in the future?
Yeah, that's a great question. It really is, the, the expansion is really to help us operate a little bit better, have a better customer experience. If you've, if any of you have been in the shop, it's tiny, but it's quaint, it's charming. We're not looking to change that, we want to keep that. However, we don't have a bathroom, we don't have great HVAC. We have a whole storage room underneath that we don't have access to because it's just through like a hole in the ground. So it's kind of just to make it a little more comfortable, give our customers more room to, to converse and hang out because you'll find if you're there, you run into your neighbor, you, it's a community oriented place, it's beautiful, people want to be there, they want to hang out, they want to get their salad that was grown there and prepared there and like sit on the farm and eat it. It's like a unique, special experience that is not offered in anywhere else in the county, especially, I mean, Pleasant Grove for sure. But yeah, so, yeah, it's, it's not going to increase that, it's just going to provide a better experience for people.
Yeah, it's kind of an unfair question for me because we're not here for that.
Yeah.
But I, I love it, it's a great addition to the neighborhood. I guess I was kind of thinking about conditional uses if we have to say anything now about it. But yeah, it was also just curious too, so.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good question, yeah.
Along that same vein, what kind of, as far as clientele, how many people do you have on site at an average time? Is it six cars, eight cars, 10 cars? I mean, I don't see a lot there, but what is kind of your deep usage right now?
It's a great, it's a great question, you know, it fluctuates throughout the day. We have our busier times, but on average, we have about three cars in the, the, the parking lot right now. So, and then we'll get a little rush and it might fill up. But generally speaking, there's about three to four cars currently, yeah.
And you've got parking for eight?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, thank you so much.
Anything else, no?
No.
We're good, okay.
This is a public hearing, so I will. Um, this is a public hearing, so I will open it up to the public, if anybody'd like to come up to the podium and comment. Just remember to state your name for the record.
Hi, I'm Jean Chents, we are the neighbors directly adjacent to this Snuck, uh, property. And I just wanted to let you know that I've known Paige ever since she was born. And she is a very, um, stalwart, um, upfront and honorable person. And if she says this is what they are going to do on the farm, that's what will happen. So I just want you to know that we support her, we are probably the most likely to be affected by traffic and parking. And so far, we have not had any issues i- as, as far as that is concerned. And I understand you have to go by your, your statutes and so forth, but, but I just wanted you to know that we as neighbors really support her in this. And we're the recipients of such a beautiful property, we can sit on our back deck and look over there and enjoy it. So I, Ed, do you have any questions for me?
No, thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to come up to the podium? Seeing none, I will close it to the public and I will bring it to the commissioners for discussion or a motion.
Turn your mic on.
If they do do the signage, is there, um, how big it's gonna be, where it's gonna be placed?
Yeah, there's, there's signage rules right now in our, is that a- I think it's like three pages long.
Like, if you go to this, if you go to the Stonehead Reception Area, there's nothing big on there. So does, so it still feels like a residential area?
Yeah.
Is there something that we, in the code that we can change to make it so it has to be that way? So it still feels-
It'd have to meet all the signage regulations that are already in place.
Is there a specific one just for that zone that we, that's created, it's for the whole Pleasant Grove?
And let's see, but it's not, it's not like commercial area signage ordinances, it's whatever's allowed in the, the specific overlay or residential.
Jacob, would you come up and answer that, please?
So, signage in residential zones is extremely limited. Um, such as a home occupation can have a little nameplate, you know, that's about four square feet in size or something like that. Um, there are certain signs that are exempt, like an entrance and an exit, uh, that's perfectly fine. Um, but, yeah, ultimately, it is just very limited already, so, you know, in terms of keeping the feel to be residential, that's what it's gonna be.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's perfect.
Thank you, Jacob.
So maybe, well, no, I don't have a question for you yet, sorry, Jacob, I'm sorry, I guess there'd be more for you guys. Considering what else is allowed in, with this overlay, I'm not too concerned with traffic because it, it's more has to do with parking, I feel like. As long as there is a good way to get in and a good way to get out without stop, and a place to park that doesn't slow down traffic on eleven hundred. So I guess-
There can't be more traffic than there was when that real construction was there.
But if, I mean, and if you look at twenty-six hundred North, you look at Stonegate, what's going on there? Uh, I mean, there's enough parkings there, and that was what would be required if there was ever a high-use, high-capacity restaurant built there.
And she'll come back for that part, it's just, we have to decide now what they want.
We're really just adding eleven hundred North.
Yeah, we're adding the street of eleven hundred North to that overlay.
To that overlay.
Yeah, okay.
Is there other properties that are big enough to have one, like Snuck? Or is that the only one?
No, I-
There's a, there's a couple along there.
There, there are a few, there's still some larger properties on eleven hundred.
So we all know what the conditional uses are. Minimum of two acres and then the square footage, I mean, parking has to match. I mean, I really can't think of anything we're missing at this point.
Hey, anything to make-
I just didn't think about what Todd brought up and asked, so that's why I wanted to take a moment to make sure we're not missing anything. So I think I'm okay.
Are there, and, and Jacob and Daniel, are there other in, uh, restrictions in, in codes? Because it is a residential area that would prevent a large commercial restaurant from being able to come in, and let's say that, uh, Paige in this, in this instance decides she doesn't want to be on that property anymore, sells the property as a whole. Again, I don't think that's happening right now, we're speaking hypothetically, that all goes away and, well, let's say Chili's buys it. Um, what prevents Chili's from being able to come in, and that would definitely ruin the feel of the residential area.
At this point, nothing. At this point, nothing. Uh, as long as Chili's meets those conditions right there, and I remember when I talked to, uh, to Paige, we talked about McDonald's, right, Paige? Like, we talk about McDonald's and say, what happens if McDonald's comes here, can they purchase the property?
Paige, don't let McDonald's go in.
I love Mc- I'm loving, I'm loving it. But the, the answer is n- nothing, as long as they meet those conditions, they're good to go. Now, I'm assuming Chili's would like to put a big sign.
Right.
And we, they are limited by a four, four, four square feet sign. That's the same as them right now.
And that, I guess that's kind of what I'm asking, is what other kind of limitations like that would constructively prohibit it?
Like, do we have hours are limited to when it can be open right now?
I mean, no.
And if we did a condition like that, just remind me, it would just be for this overlay conditional use?
Correct.
And then it's a-
Yes, so if we make a-
Do you not want to make hours?
If we make a condition-
Well, you think about, you think about the wedding venue.
True, you're right, you're right.
They're out till ten, eleven.
But, but the conditions will be applied to the restaurant use only. So that, so those conditions, those three conditions are right there, if you scroll up a little bit, it has the number, right there, has the number one, so they only apply for the restaurant. Again, those are the only three cond- sorry, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, what wedding have you been to that doesn't have food?
Oh, it would only lead to number one.
They're not selling it, it's, it's a different use, that, that, the other use is permitted in the zone, I think.
Well, and I wouldn't even care if they're open till one AM, I would, it would be more like a quiet thing for me, a noise factor. And I don't know if we have noise.
There are noise.
Ordinances, so we don't have to worry about saying anything.
We do have ordinances for noise already establishing it.
There are noise, there's light.
Sorry, can we just have one person at a time for the recording?
Go, Todd.
No. Alicia yelled at me.
So we're covered no- noise-wise, and you were gonna say something about-
Well, yeah, noise ordinances are seven AM to ten PM and anything that's disruptive. I don't see a problem with it.
Commissioners, do you have any other questions for Jacob or Daniel?
I don't at this time.
I'm gonna bring it back-
Wait till he's almost sitting and then we'll ask him again.
Thank you, gentlemen, I'm just gonna bring it back up to the commissioners.
So it's usually always noise, traffic, and what could come in.
Alright, make a motion.
That we wouldn't want, yeah. I mean, we've kind of got, I just want to make sure we've got the bases covered. As far as I can. Okay, go ahead.
Alright, I move the planning commission forward a recommendation of approval to the city council for the request of Paige Westover to amend city code section ten dash thirteen D dash three dash E, conditional uses in the ro- rural commercial overlay zone, by amending and qualifying the provisions for use fifty-eight eleven restaurants and adopting the exhibits and conditions and findings of the staff report and is modified by the condition that all final planning, engineering and fire department requirements are met.
A second. Alright, I have a motion by Commissioner Martineau and a second by Commissioner Nelson, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item on tonight's agenda is to review and approve the minutes for the January second, twenty twenty-five special meeting. Sorry, June second, twenty twenty-five special meeting. Thanks, Christina.
How do I do that?
Just say that you moved to approve the minutes from June second, twenty twenty-five.
I approve?
Moved to approve.
I moved to approve the minutes from June second, twenty twenty-five special meeting.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Nelson and a second by Commissioner Martineau, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is to review and approve the minutes for the June twelfth, twenty twenty-five meeting.
I motion to approve the minutes for the June twelfth, twenty twenty-five meeting.
Second.
I have a motion by commercial, by, by Commissioner Shirley and a second by Commissioner Fugel, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And I would take a motion to adjourn.
Uh, so moved.
So moved.